Roll call again to get it recorded, or do you want to just go ahead and move on?
I think we'll get another roll call vote here shortly, so.
Okay.
We're good. We're recording.
Okay, just a reminder for everyone to keep their phones on mute if you've called in. And also to let everyone know that didn't hear Jonathan say this is a recorded meeting. So if you participate, you're giving your permission to be recorded. And we will make the recording and the minutes available as usual. So typically, we start with the Pledge of Allegiance, but we've been skipping that. In lieu of not having all of us together in one room or a flag. So I'll move to the approval of minutes from the previous meeting. And last Karen, you have other minutes.
Yeah, there's a couple of sets of them. I have approval of the March 24 regular meeting minutes and then the April 7 special meeting or special session.
I would move that we approve those minutes. This is Rich.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mr. Clevenger.
Aye.
Mr. Githens.
Aye.
Mrs. Monroe.
Aye.
Ms. Ruchardi.
Aye.
Mr. West.
Aye.
I'll vote at aye.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the approval of March financial reports.
That is not ready yet. I'll have that hopefully next meeting.
All right, no problem. We understand. The next we have the trash contract. I believe that at our last regular meeting, we opened the bids and Jonathan and Bob. Were going to review the bids to ensure the contract was apples to apples with what we asked for. Jonathan, do you have? Update for that?
Yeah, I would recommend that we accept the low bid from Republic Services. We still have some documents to trade back and forth and get signatures on and those kinds of things. But we would expect it to take effect around July 1st. But just a motion to accept the low bid from Republic Services is my recommendation.
Okay.
I would, this is Rich, I would move that we accept the proposal from Republic Services for trash and recycling. Become effective July 1st and authorize the president to sign that contract.
This is Sally and I would second that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion from Rich with a second from Sally. Roll call.
Mr. Clevenger.
Aye.
Jenny.
Pardon?
Question, how does this compare to what it is right now? Just curious. Is there an increase?
No, I don't believe so. I think they came in at $15, correct Jonathan?
Yeah, I think, aren't we a little over that right now Karen?
I believe it's 1409 right now.
Okay.
So.
91 cent increase.
Slight increase?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Go ahead Karen.
Mr. Clevenger.
Aye.
Mr. Githens.
Aye.
I've lost my place. Mrs. Monroe.
Aye.
Mr. Ruchardi.
Aye.
Mr. West.
Aye.
All in favor.
Thanks Karen.
This is Jim Clevenger. I wanted to interject. Is the contract Jonathan going to be identical to the previous contracts we've had with them?
Very, very similar, yes. It'll be three years with the price locked in, same pickup times and terms and equipment and all that kind of stuff.
Okay.
I did have a question on, on the, I don't have any issue obviously with the contract. I'm really thrilled that they gave us such a great price and a low increase. Do we still, will we add the dollar admin fee and continue to keep that as part of the bill? So the bills would essentially go up about 91 cents?
That, yeah, that would be up to council. I would assume we could get into that in a future meeting and further detail. But my assumption would be yes, at some point, close to July, good plan for an increase.
Okay, thanks Jonathan. All right, next on the agenda is the Arbor Day proclamation. I think we've been doing a proclamation all the years I've been on the council. And this proclamation basically is to celebrate Arbor Day. Which will be proclaimed on April 24th, 2020. And the proclamation reads that in the town of Culver. I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further urge citizens to plant and care for trees to gladden the heart and promote the well being of this and future generations. Basically, it opens up with an explanation of Harbor Day, which is observed for planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And as you all know, we have a tree commission and they plant lots of trees in our town and make it beautiful. And promotes well being in the community. So I would ask that you motion to approve the proclamation for Arbor Day.
I would make a motion to approve.
Transcribed.
Arbor Day resolution.
All right.
All right.
Do I have a second?
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mr. Clevenger.
Aye.
Mr. Githens. Mrs. Monroe.
Aye.
Ms. Ruchardi.
Aye.
Mr. West.
Aye.
All in favor.
Thanks Karen. Next on the agenda, we have the Regional Stellar Plan update. Just wanted to let you know that the regional crossroads team met last week. We had talked with Okra about the COVID response plan that they are doing. And wanted to let you know that they have encouraged us to continue moving forward with the Regional Stellar projects. Their thinking is that the sooner we get those projects completed, the better an economic impact in Marshall County. And so we are continuing to move forward on those. And we'll keep you updated. Jonathan, did you want to add anything?
No, we still are trying to figure out our timeline, I guess, on the Culver projects. And where exactly to take those matches from. And we've been holding off on having kind of a discussion on that. Wanting to have the council and CRC together for that at some point in the future. So kind of waiting, hoping we can all get in the same room sometime this summer at this point. Otherwise, we may just have to schedule it online, so.
Okay, great. Next, we have Stellar Plan update. I'll let you do that one Jonathan.
Yeah, on the Beach Lodge, you know, we're really close to completion there. Just a few punch list items. We've got the outside landscaping still to do. And then a final change order that'll cover all the smaller changes we made with a small deduction from the total contract amount of a few thousand dollars. Still waiting. We did kind of change the landscaping plan to come back a little bit and save a few dollars to use towards some stuff in the concession stand. So waiting on those final numbers and, and basically the landscaping to come in and should be wrapped up very soon. On Cavalier Park, everything's moving along, all the equipment's there finally. The restroom building itself is standing, roof is on it. Everything looks good, looks like they're making good progress, so. I think that's all I had for stellar projects unless anyone has any questions.
Any questions from council?
This is Rich, no.
Great, thank you. We'll move on to the Town Manager's Report.
I don't know that we had, no, I'm looking through it. We didn't have this on here separately, so I'll address it under my report. A group of us had a meeting this past week about how to handle the park. Security and activities going on at the park. During this time, we came up with a resolution. We addressed it a little bit, I think, in the original resolution we did, kind of authorizing the council president some control over opening and closing public facilities. But just wanted to make it 100% clear that we would be closing the beach section at the park. In addition to the previous closures we've had. And that anyone using, so we'll close it throughout the extent of the stay at home order that's been issued by the governor. Right now that expires on the 20th, but we're saying that if, if he extends that, we will also automatically extend our beach closure along with that stay at home order. And also just wanting to clarify in the resolution that anyone violating the closure of the beach would be subject to the same fines and violation process that are outlined in Culver Code of Ordinances, Section 94.99, which is the park hours of operation. So basically extending that Code of Ordinances to apply to the beach being closed throughout this stay at home order.
And I assume Jonathan, you want to motion to approve adding that to resolution?
This is, written as its own resolution, 2020-006.
Okay.
Read the whole thing if you want, or.
I think you explained it pretty well. Council, do you have any questions?
No.
Jenny, didn't you go ahead and sign that resolution already?
Not yet.
Oh, okay.
We, we approved, I approved communicating it to the public Jim, but that was it.
Okay.
And Wayne felt it was best to go ahead and write it as a resolution.
If there are no questions or comments, this is Rich, I would move that we adopt Resolution 2020-006.
Do I have a second?
This is Bill Githens, I have a second.
Okay, roll call. Sorry, did I miss someone's comment?
I think Sally said discussion.
Okay, go ahead Sally.
I didn't have any discussion. I said it was fine.
Okay. Roll call Karen. We may have lost Karen for a moment, so.
Sorry, I was unmuted.
A motion to approve Resolution 2020-006. Motion was from Rich, the second was from Mr. Githens. And we're ready for roll call.
Yep, sorry, I had to unmute myself. Mr. Clevenger. Mr. Clevenger.
Aye.
Mr. Githens. Mrs. Monroe.
Aye.
Ms. Ruchardi.
Aye.
Mr. West.
Aye.
All in favor.
Great, thanks Karen.
If I may interject again, I think you should not only put that on your website, but also publish it in the newspaper. Since it involves kind of an extension of a fine.
Okay. Yeah, that, that also would reach more people from outside of Culver that use that beach. All right. Back to you Jonathan.
Yeah, next up, I had a couple utilities items. The first one was a change order request from E&amp;B Paving for our State Street paving project. Going over all the details with the contractor and Midwestern Engineering and Bob and I. There are four driveway approaches on State Street where we didn't include the saw cutting pavement and sidewalk work for those approaches. Reviewing it with them, we would like to add it. We feel like it's a necessary part of the project to make it work. The request is $3,500. Again, Bob and I both reviewed it, agree with it. And the bids were under budget from what we had planned to where this is not an issue at this point. Request to approve change order from E&amp;B for $3,500.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve or any questions?
Clevenger moves to approve.
Githens, seconds.
Thank you, roll call.
Mr. Clevenger.
Aye.
Mr. Githens.
Aye.
Mrs. Monroe.
Aye.
Ms. Ruchardi.
Aye.
Mr. West.
Aye.
All in favor.
Thank you.
Second item is Bob has a quote for us from Thomas Excavating. It's for a hydrant replacement at the intersection of Mill and Climax Street for a hydrant that no longer works. The quote is for $5,594 and I'd again ask for a motion to approve that.
Clevenger moves.
Githens, seconds.
Roll call.
Mr. Clevenger.
Aye.
Mr. Githens.
Aye.
Mrs. Monroe.
Aye.
Ms. Ruchardi.
Aye.
Mr. West.
Aye.
All in favor.
I think the last thing I have is just to note that we've essentially canceled all public events related to town through May 3rd. And we will probably look at that again when the April 20th. The current stay at home order expires, whether that's extended or how that's treated to make decisions on the dates as they go on past the 3rd, so. I think that's all I have. So is there any questions?
Any questions for Jonathan?
Nope.
No.
Okay. Next, we've got department head reports and I do know we have some of the department heads on the call. So I'll go ahead and call on each of you. And if you do want to report on anything, let us know. We'll start with the EMS and Deanna.
Yes, just the update, we are doing okay on supplies and everything. The community has been great. We've received some donations. As far as staffing, I have one girl off who has utilized the pandemic leave due to a health illness that she is concerned about. So she has been granted that. We will reevaluate that in May. And then I had one girl call, she is on the task force with Tri-County. And they just went out to New York for the next two weeks. She had a couple shifts, but everything's covered, so. So far, everything's going well and. If you guys have any questions for me, I'll be happy to answer them.
Great, thanks Deanna. Any questions for Deanna?
Nope.
No questions, just that we appreciate what you and your crew are doing.
Thank you. I'll be sure to pass that along.
Thank you.
Um, let's see, next we have fire department. Is Ken on the call by chance? Okay. So I don't think Ken is here. Is Wayne on the call by chance?
Yes.
Hi Wayne, anything to report?
No, not at this time.
Okay. And thank you as well Wayne, appreciate the long hours you guys are pulling. Is Amber on the call for the park at all?
I'm here.
Hi Amber.
Hello.
Probably not a lot of new information after Jonathan went, huh?
No, yeah, I was gonna give the same update, just as Jonathan had said. The east end of the park is blocked off and then tomorrow we'll have a maintenance worker and a utilities worker moving all the picnic tables either under the pavilions or to the east side. And then we'll be roping off the pavilions as well, but that's all we've got going on right now.
Okay, thank you Amber. Bob Porter, I think I saw your name. Are you on the call? Do you have anything to report that Jonathan didn't cover?
I'm here and it's already been taken care of. Thank you.
Great, thank you Bob. All right, well, department heads, stay, keep staying safe out there and know that we really appreciate you coming into work and staggering your hours and going through some unusual times. Next, we have board and commission reports. Is anyone on the call to report on the plan commission?
Marty's here. I'll say that the plan commission meeting for April will not be held, but we will be holding a meeting in May. I would also say that our building inspector Chuck DeWitt is on the job and is conducting inspections throughout this, throughout the issue. So he's on the job. That's all I got.
Thanks Marty. Anyone from BZA? Okay. Oh sure, go ahead Jonathan.
Just to make it clear, BZA will be meeting on Thursday. They'll meet online, teams, just like we've been doing. They have two cases to hear, so.
Okay, thanks Jonathan. Aside from BZA, next we have redevelopment commission. Any, anything new to report, Rich?
Yes, our next meeting is Monday, the 20th. Again, it will be a Microsoft Teams meeting online. The link again will be posted on TGNL. A couple of things that we're working on to help support the local businesses, the redevelopment commission had passed a couple of motions at our last meeting. And we're supporting the development of websites that will allow online purchases from some of our local businesses. Currently, I believe we have three contracts that have been led with web designers or consultants who are working with a couple of our local businesses to bring online their, their products and shopping. That will help support them through the current pandemic and then also in the future going forward. The redevelopment commission is working with Develop Culver, which is our main street organization. Who's helping to provide guidance to some of the local businesses and connecting them with resources for navigating the various programs that are out there to assist them during the COVID-19. We have a, have connected the businesses, we have a, a conference call every Friday afternoon at 3:30 to provide updated information with the businesses and anyone else who's interested in participating. And our, that's it.
Great, thank you Rich and thanks to the CRC as well. Before we move on from CRC, Rich and Jonathan, I know I had sent out a message about the idea of doing a beautify Culver flower project for the businesses. And I sent, I sent a quote to Jonathan from the garden here in Culver. The idea being that we would put plants and flowers and all the window boxes and the planters in front of the businesses that have them. And sort of send a message of boosting morale, getting the businesses sort of prepped to reopen down the road here, we're hoping. And also just to really beautify the town. I think typically the businesses work with Elizabeth on this. But I thought it was maybe an expense that many of them probably don't want to have to deal with right now. So I kind of threw that idea out to all of you, just to get an idea of what you thought of doing that. In the meantime, I did get a quote from Elizabeth and Rich thought that it would be ideal to run this project idea by the CRC and see what they think. So I thought we could just turn that one over to CRC for now. And then if necessarily, necessary, come back to the council. I did want to see, ask the council members for some weigh in on that idea. If you could let, let us know what you think of that idea, that would be great.
Well, that's the quote.
Bill Githens, I think CRC is the best vehicle because the businesses are in the Tiff District. And that's a good way to give money back to the businesses in the Tiff District.
Okay, thanks Bill. Anyone else?
I agree with Bill Githens. This is Bill Clevenger. I agree. I think that the ball ought to be in the CRC's court.
Okay, thanks Bill.
This is Rich. I agree, it will be on the agenda for our meeting on Monday. Being on the committee that's reviewed the grant applications, have a better sense on how how financially impact, how negatively the financial impact has been on, on our local businesses. And they certainly can't afford to put out money for the, the flower boxes and things like that. And as Ginny pointed out, as we get later into the summer month, it, it will be sort of a glaring absence if those are not, are not filled, so.
Thank you Rich. Sally, any comments?
I would agree that it's definitely something that needs to be done in Culver. Brightness of town and one thing for sure, right now, we need a little bit to smile at.
This is true. All right, well, we'll see if the CRC wants to take on that project and if not, we'll address it at the next council meeting. And since we've had a report from redevelopment commission, is anyone on the call with the tree commission? Okay. Next, we'll move on to the clerks report then.
I just have one claim over 1,500 and that is for Wyland, Humphrey, Clevenger and Cerisee for $6,324 for attorney's fees, which are well earned.
We agree. Do I have a motion to approve the claim please?
Clevenger approves.
Githens, seconds. Githens, seconds.
I just want to point out that's Bill Clevenger approving of that. Roll call.
Mr. Clevenger.
Aye.
Mr. Githens.
Aye.
Mrs. Monroe.
Aye.
Ms. Ruchardi.
Aye.
Mr. West.
Aye.
All voting aye.
Great, thank you Karen.
And then.
And thank you, Mr. Clevenger.
You're welcome.
The second thing I have is the sidewalk program. We've kind of put it off. Usually we take applications on April 1st. Obviously, town hall was closed that day, so we kind of had to punt on how to handle it. And so I made application packets available on the website and they were also sent out on Town Garden Lake. And link is on our Facebook page. We'll begin, we will accept applications via email to my email account, which is, you can send it to clerk@townofculver.org. Those will be accepted no earlier than 8:00 AM Friday, May 1st. So if you have any questions, let me know. And I really appreciate everyone's patience as we've kind of had to readjust how we do things.
Appreciate the efforts you've gone to though Karen, to make that happen for people who are interested in that program.
And I will say, it may go without saying, but I think the garage, the townwide garage sale is going to be either postponed or canceled. Usually that's last Friday and Saturday of, of April. And depending on what the, where the governor goes.
Yeah.
Have to readjust on that one too.
We might want to have one in the summer after everyone did all this cleaning.
You know what, that, yeah.
I, I'm pretty sure some closets got organized the last month.
And if that's something we wanted to take a look at, at scheduling at the next meeting, that's fine and then I can put information out about it.
Great, thank you. Anything else for the clerks report? All right. Next, we have the attorney's report.
Yeah, I have three things. First Jenny, I hope I'm not stepping on your toes a little bit. Dr. Hollum, the county health officer has requested some input from the towns. He doesn't think that we're at a point yet where we're necessarily over the hump on this COVID-19 business. But he's already looking ahead about reopening the county businesses and industry and that kind of thing. And so he's reached out to all of the towns and I don't know, I, nobody from Culver was able to apparently attend the meeting that he was talking about today, but he's still looking for some, somebody to be involved to provide some, excuse me, some input on going forward, best plans. He doesn't want to reopen and then, you know, run into a surge again and, and more problems. So he wants to have as much input as he can and wants from, I guess, all realms. So I don't, I don't know whether you got somebody in mind or you're gonna do it. or you're going to do it or whoever, but um I would think it would be good for somebody from Culver to uh contact the health department. Talk to Ashley Garcia, the administrator there. They've got some ideas already going and and want to share those and then gain information from Culver as to, you know, some things that they can also apply.
Yeah, I knew about the meeting Jim and I could not attend because we had our grant committee meeting um at the same time. I did write down my thoughts and pass them on to Commissioner Overmeyer. Um, I would love to gauge the thoughts of the council. My own opinion, um, I know they were at one point considering possibly reopening with or without the governor's um order. I vehemently oppose to reopening businesses unless the governor has ordered it as such. Just because I don't think we should do anything to defy state orders um under any circumstance. So that that's my, was my initial thought. Uh, you know, just i- if the governor allows businesses to go back to work, then I would certainly support that based on the expert knowledge that they've been collecting and I think they've done a good job of communicating that to the public and they they have surrounded themselves with people who are much more expert than I think we are.
Yeah, I, I think he wants to get it set up so that once they get to that point, I'm not sure he's defying the governor's orders. And let's say the governor said, let's reopen on whatever date it might be. I think Dr. Hollum wants to situations, for instance, like the clothing store that there may be only so many people in, they keep separation of distances, use Plexiglas for the factory if they can, you know, shield people off from from contact. Use of mask, uh gloves, uh sanitizing, all those kinds of things. I think they're trying to put together a best practice for each kind of commercial entity in reopening and what they can do to minimize any kind of chance of that coming back.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. I I would appreciate that even for um the tourism industry which, you know, a lot of our businesses are are heavily reliant on that, but also may change some of those procedures depending on where the industry, but yeah.
Okay, and then uh the other two things have to do with the 415 Lakeshore property. I'm sure all of you are aware that we received a tort claim notice from seven entities. Four of them are apparently related to Mr. Van Hawk in some fashion. Motorcycle equipment, kitchen equipment, uh those kinds of things. And uh I've turned that over to, or I sent a letter to Scott McGinnis, I don't know whether Jonathan Jonathan did as well. Uh, and asked that they turn it into our carrier uh and will let our carrier respond to the tort claim notice. This isn't a lawsuit, but it's the first step that has to be done in order for a suit to follow. I noticed that they, it has to be done, tort claim notice within 180 days of the wrong. If the fire was the wrong, uh, this was done on the 179th day, so it was, you know, at the at the very last day from, if you count from that date. The uh the other three entities that are involved in the um tort claim are trusts. It's, you know, I'm not quite sure how they fit in. The claim is, is that there was an offer that uh space was going to be provided to these entities for use. And they really don't have any damages claim. I can understand why they don't have a damages claim because I can't figure out what theory somebody would have just because they were offered space in a in a demolished building uh and one yet to be built. But in any event, that's that's where those three entities are coming from. I would point out that if you read the claim, some of the damages they have are pretty far fetched, so um, I'm not sure where all this is going to go. The fire department apparently is insured by a different entity than the rest of you folks. And I know uh that insurance company has received the notice and and they've got to open a file and so I guess we're going to see, you know, kind of what goes on from there. I I would suspect that our, the town's insurance carrier will deny the deny the notice of tort claim. And uh then we'll just leave it to see uh when in or if a suit's filed. The uh claimants have up till two years from the date of the injury or accident or accrual. So uh they don't have to file a suit in the next six months. I mean, they really have uh a year and a half from now to 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 file suit. If anybody's got any questions about any of those things, uh they're free to to contact me. I'll try to keep Jonathan and the rest of you informed as to uh, I guess, progress as far as the tort claim notice itself and our insurance people being involved in in going forward. The uh, kind of the item related to that was before foreclosing on our lien, I wanted to update the title work and I, the title people have been extremely busy since this pandemic's taken place because there are a number of folks that are, for whatever reason, low interest rates, needing money or whatever refinancing. So it took my title people much longer than anticipated to to complete the new title search on the property. And um in addition to all of the town's liens uh for sewer liens uh and some other things, and of course our lien for the demolition expenses, there is a judgment in there, a pretty substantial amount of money from another entity. Which uh uh could be that if we get to that stage in a foreclosure, if we have a priority over the other gentleman, uh, he may very well pay our demolition costs in order to uh try to get title to the uh to the real estate. So um, there are some twists that that have come up from that title work. I I'm not inclined to delay going forward with the foreclosure action just because they filed the tort claim notice. That may very well trigger a counterclaim or whatever the case might be, but unless you tell me different, I'm going to proceed to try and collect our demolition costs and uh our attorney fees. And if you have questions about any of that process, feel free to uh contact me.
Thank you, Jim. Um, sorry that you have to keep working on this this particular case, but wow. So council members, if you have questions about the tort claim or anything else, reach out to Jim. And if we need to have a meeting later, um, an executive session, uh, we can certainly do that too. But thank you, Jim, for following up on all of that. Um, okay, next on the agenda is um usually a utility shut off or ordinance violation. Has anyone on the call um got a utility shut off or ordinance violation issue? I'm guessing not. Um, and actually before uh citizen input, I wanted to cover one council issue, which is my own and and Rich and Jonathan and Karen. The four of us uh met as a committee to do the grant review for the business aid grant program. We reviewed all of the applications that are currently in. And we wanted to uh let the council know that we had completed that review. Um, and that currently out of um all of the applications we received, if we were to go ahead and uh award those grants now as we had planned and have Karen uh write the checks for those. I believe our total amount comes out to 136,025 dollars. Jonathan, Rich, can you confirm that for me? Because I don't have it up on my computer.
We receive, this is Rich, we received 21 applications for grants. And as Ginny indicated, after our review and evaluation of those, um, we're recommending, and I think it's, I think the amount is 146,075 dollars.
Okay. So we we know that you have approved of the grant program and you authorized the review committee to go through the grant applications. It is possible that we would receive um additional grant applications because we did extend the deadline. We believe this is probably the majority of what we'll receive and we're ready to move forward to have um Karen cut those checks. The grant committee also um discussed having each of the recipients from those respective business owners would sign an agreement that basically says you've been awarded this grant from the town because you met eligibility requirements. And we would uh like for you to use these grant dollars for the purpose with which it was intended on your grant application. We will fill in what that is based on their application. So in most cases, that's going to be used for rent, a mortgage, utilities or payroll. And uh that specific letter would be written to each of the businesses informing them of the amount they've received and what we believe according to their application it's to be used for. They would have to sign that letter acknowledging that they will do that. Um, and we thought that would be the best way to create uh an agreement between them and the town to receive those dollars. Jonathan, Karen, Rich, do you have any comments or input or anything I'm forgetting?
Uh, Madam Chair, may I ask, uh, this is, it's in addition to any of the federal funding mechanisms that are out there for small businesses. In other words, they could apply for the payroll protection program and that would be, this was over and above that program or whatever other ones that they might get, the grants or whatever that are floating around.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Many of them have already applied for those, Jim. This is Rich. And um, no one that we know has received any affirmative response yet. The system in terms of the application process um has broken down several times because it's been inundated with so many applicants.
Yeah, and I want to reiterate that we kind of saw this, Jim, as a short term solution to bridge that time period between when the pandemic started and the businesses were negatively affected and the time with which it'll take to uh obtain some of those federal grant dollars. And a few cases, we have businesses that don't qualify if they're not three years or old at this point. And um, in some cases, uh, they may qualify for one of them, but not the other. So uh, we kind of saw this as a bridge the gap between uh the immediate need now and uh when they would receive some of those federal dollars if they do.
Jenny? Bill Clevenger, question. The grants are all 7,500?
Uh, no, it depends on what they requested, what their monthly expenses were.
Were there more? Okay.
Yeah, in some cases, their monthly expenses, um, you know, we took an average of uh three months worth of expenses and we did ask for supportive supporting documentation of all of those expenses. So it just kind of depends on the business and the request and what they were able to support with documentation.
So there were some grants that were more than 7,500?
No, none over 7,500, but some less than 7,500.
All right, thank you for explanation. Good.
You're welcome.
Bill, just as an overall picture, um, there were a lot of grants at 7,500, but they went down as low as 3,200, I believe was the lowest one.
Yeah, okay.
And again, as Ginny indicated, there's documentation on either rents or mortgages, on payroll, on utility expenses, copies of NIPS go bills.
Yeah, and we really feel like since it's a large amount of expenditure going out, uh, we didn't want to have to go through and read every single one of these and all the details involved in each. But we look at this as being a claim and for um Karen's sake, we'd like to approve that claim to pay out the grant dollars. There are two or three of these. We'll have a follow-up question for the business owner or a need for documentation. We would not cut those checks until we had that resolved, but we know that currently this is our total that we would be seeking to have Karen uh begin cutting checks for. So we wanted to let you know and have you officially approve it as a claim.
Are you asking for that tonight?
Yes.
I move.
Second.
Githens seconds.
Okay, I heard a second from Sally and then from Bill. So Karen, can we document that as from Sally and then take roll call?
Yes, so the motion is to approve paying out the grant dollars?
Yes.
To clarify, uh, Mr. Clevenger?
Aye.
Mr. Githens?
Aye.
Mrs. Monroe?
Aye.
Ms. Ratchardi?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
Okay, I just wanted to get that done before citizen input. Um, and then uh move on to citizen input and council issues. Are there any citizens on the phone who want to unmute for citizen input? I hear a puppy, but I don't hear any humans. All right. I will move on then to council issues, starting with Mr. Githens.
None.
Uh, Mr. Clevenger, any council issues?
None, thank you.
Ms. Ratchardi, any council issues?
Uh, none, thank you.
Uh, Mr. West, any council issues?
None, but I, just to comment on what Jim introduced earlier in terms of the opening up the the county. I I think we need to be very cautious about that. If you look at the the number of cases in Indiana and the number of deaths in Indiana and the number in Marshall County. I, my personal belief is we still have not been impacted as much as we will be as far as the spread of this pandemic, so. That's just my two cents.
Thank you, Rich. Uh, any other council issues or anything else from Karen, Jonathan or Jim?
I have one thing, Jenny.
Sure.
Just, do you want to extend the emergency declaration in the meeting this time?
Yeah, very good. Um, you guys, as you know, we have to do that every seven days and we're right on the date when we would need to extend our own emergency declaration. Could I get a motion to extend another week?
So move. Githens?
Second.
Okay, second from Sally. Roll call.
Mr. Clevenger?
Aye.
Mr. Githens?
Aye.
Mrs. Monroe?
Aye.
Ms. Ratchardi?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
All in favor?
Great, thank you. And thanks for remembering that, Jonathan. I appreciate it.
Yep.
Um, I think uh we're done with council issues. I just want to encourage everyone to stay healthy. Encourage our department heads to continue to take every precaution and stay healthy with you and your staffs. Greatly appreciate everything everybody is doing to do that. Um, and we will continue communicating with each other in between now and the next meeting in April. Otherwise, I would uh honor a motion to adjourn to claims.
This is Rich, I will so move.
Bill Githens second.
All right, roll call.
Mr. Clevenger?
Aye.
Mr. Githens?
Aye.
Mrs. Monroe?
Aye.
Ms. Ratchardi?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
All voting aye.
Great, thanks everyone. Appreciate it.
Thank you.